Secondly, we do not comment on chat. We don't allow people in the room here to chat with each other because it's disruptive. The same thing happens on Zoom. So please, if you have any questions, please let us know. But with that, we will enter our agenda as published for this date. And the first item is any public input on non-agenda items? Does anybody here want to speak to a non-agenda item? Please, sir. Yeah, mic's on, right? If it's green, it's on.
Okay, I get nervous, but my name's Jeff, Jeff Dak. I'm a resident Camden, 31 Lime Rock Street, also a member of the Camden Farmers Market, seventh year we've been involved. And I'm going to read this statement prepared on behalf of the Camden Farmers Market. To the Camden Townspeople Select Board and Town Staff, the Camden Farmers Market is a democratically-run organization of farmers and producers around since 1974. 2022 is our 48th year. We're supporting member of the main Federation of Farmers Market, I'm sorry, the main Federation of Farmers Markets. We're a collection of over 20 individual businesses that come together May to September to create a marketplace of locally-produced goods for the community of Camden and the surrounding areas, as well as visitors and tourists. We love setting up in the current green space as it's the perfect space for the community to gather. Every week, folks shop and have a chance to buy the season's freshest, most nutritious and beautiful range of products. Many socialize, listen to live music, grab some yummy treats and sit with their friends in the beautiful green space while children play and dogs are walked. Some of the members have attended this market for many years consistently, bringing high-quality goods that would not otherwise be available in the town of Camden. We believe that the market provides a vital contribution to what makes the town of Camden so special and a popular and desirable place to live and visit. The goods and services we provide and our commitment to community are a key part of our life's work, and that is why we wish our view on this issue to be part of the public record. We're writing to let you voice, we're writing to you to voice our concerns over the potential sale of Tannery Park. Our market members are all licensed by the state as mobile vendors. Most have vehicles, trucks, vans, trailers, that are integral to the way they do business with bulk produce, boxes, crates, seedlings, coolers, ice, refrigeration, tables, packaging, staging, et cetera, all from their vehicles. All main farmers markets vend in this manner. The Camden Farmers Market needs over 20,000 square feet or about half an acre of space for vendors, their setups and vehicles, as well as common space for shopping customers. This estimate does not include customer parking, which can exceed 70 cars at busy times. The Crane Sport proposal does not appear to provide adequate parking for the market visitors, vendors and tenants of his workshop proposals. The proposal, which envisions vendors using push carts in the barn and a central pavilion without vehicles, may not be a tenable one for most of our vendors. We are also concerned that a project of this scope and detail would take many years to complete. The current 22 businesses that are members of the market would face hardship weathering the interim period. The Crane Sport vision does not support a public farmers market, but rather that of a private marketplace. If the Camden Farmers Market gets squeezed out of the green space we have used at Tannery Park, we may be squeezed out of Camden as there is no other central site available. Available sites, including some in neighboring towns, are now in discussion as group fatigue from our annual location insecurity has overtaken the regular business of our meetings. The Tannery site has naturally become an important gathering location on market days. We view our market as a proper commercial use of the site. We thank the town for generously leasing to us over the years and hope for many more years to come. Please consider these facts in further deliberation on the future of this prime town location. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good points. I saw another hand up. It was Peter.
I live on Chestnut Street. I'm a member of the Budget Committee last year and this year. This is a stop-in and a visit that I basically want to follow up, a question and a comment that I had with Audra at the end of the meeting last Thursday. I did not put the question to a very formal and didn't make sense at all, and it left unanswered. So I wanted to take an opportunity tonight to bring to the town's attention, and specifically the Select Boards, that last year, this town set aside $125,000 out of a budget line item 904002 out of our surplus. We have almost $2 million in surplus above what's normally set aside for a town this size. So we set aside $125,000 for tax relief. This budget, this year that we passed, well, we didn't pass, we just judged on it, last Thursday, had zero set aside for tax relief. And I would say, based on the comments that I've seen in the newspaper, and the Select Board will see, I think, plenty to come, tax relief after this last, quote, "adjustment" will be in order for when you folks put together the budget. And that's just my input. I'd be glad to talk about it. Have anybody write me. You know how to get in touch with me. I just think it's your opportunity to give not just people that are in need of help, but people that are working two jobs and people that are trying to, you know, hang on to their house after this adjustment. I think you're going to be hearing a lot about it.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks for coming. Good to see you. That was the last thing.
Is there a question?
No. Can I just clarify?
Yes, you may.
They voted on a budget that sets aside $330,000 in tax relief from the surplus.
That was my understanding also. But anyway, sorry, go ahead.
This is more a question. I'm Tom Restick, 67 Rosson. This is a clarity question because we're all confused as to whether there's actually going to be, in addition to the ballot, an in-person town meeting this year. There's Article 1 that we're going to be discussing that says there's going to be a moderator. So that implies there's some sort of meeting. But it also says it takes place from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Washington Street.
Which is a secret ballot, yes.
So is there a, the question is, is there an actual in-person town meeting we're all going to be at? And if not, why? Because we all thought we just voted on not having a town meeting for the budget purpose. So maybe you can explain that.
Okay, we will. We'll get to that whole setup very quickly. A lot of questions regarding the election forthcoming. And we're not going to be discussing it tonight.
But just briefly, that term "town meeting" is a really confusing one because it actually refers to all voting. So we have two portions of the town meeting, and the secret ballot portion actually also has a moderator. It's just, so it's just sort of old-fashioned wording there.
It's very confusing. That's why in the ballot, we always try to emphasize paper ballot. People understand that better than the town meeting description. You had a question. It was non-agenda.
I'm Paul Cartwright. I live at 13 Mill Street. And I've had a long involvement with the Tannery property. And I hope you're paying close attention to what Jeff read from the farmers market. I would like to comment that it seems significant to me that the Crane Sport proposal, no one from that proposal has even met with the farmers market or asked them what their requirements might be. And if we accept, as I do, and I think many people do, that the farmers market is an important part of our community, this really calls into question making any kind of arrangement with Crane Sport, since no attempt has been made to accommodate the farmers market on that property. Which leads me to a second comment I'd like to make. That is that I took a look at the proposed language, and I know we're getting into that later, but I think it's very important that the town has repeatedly made itself clear by vote that they want to have a say about what happens to that property. And I think it would be a big mistake, and certainly one that many people, including myself, would try to not have happen, to make an end run around the public by eliminating them from the process of approving whatever happens there. I think as, I served on the Select Board, and you all are, and I think our responsibility is really to listen and negotiate with the public. And I don't see that happening in this process. So maybe I don't know. I'm not, I was trying to say you haven't tried, but I don't see it happening, and certainly according to the people from the farmers market with whom I've met, they haven't been consulted. So that's it for now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ray, you were the last hand, I think.
I would also like, Ray, Andreessen Cove Road Camden, I would also like to just back up everything that Paul and Jeff said about the farmers market. My question, though, is on the stuff to be discussed tonight about the ballot and the vote and everything, is this everything that's going to be on the ballot this year?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the two petitions and what else is going to be there besides the petitions.
We have a lot, lot more homework to do, Ray, and a lot of that will be addressed on the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I might shake a round.
I hope so. Yes.
My name is Jeff Pittman. I'm Chestnut Street here in Camden. It looks like it's not an agenda item for the Tannery subject here tonight. But I would love to weigh in on this. I've been thinking long and hard, ever since Apollo left town, on what would be a good use for that property. And I know there's many different opinions, but I can't help but keep coming back to the idea that it's a gift to the town to have that property as a public asset. And I think it would behoove the town to look long and hard about expanding it way beyond just the farmers market, but a place for collection. You could have ice skating rinks there in the wintertime. You could put a skate park there for the kids that are always downtown tearing things up. Great picnic area. A little bandstand wouldn't hurt. I mean, there's a variety of things. I think there's a lot of people in town with deep pockets that might be willing to fund some slightly altruistic projects there. And it seems to me, this is all sort of a surprise to a lot of people in town, that it isn't already a foregone town property. I think there's maybe a mistaken impression that some discussion about the farmers market in time gone by here has kind of said it, that people wanted that property as a public asset. And it seems to me that anything that happens with that should maybe not be a town meeting item even at this stage of the game because it's so close. But much like the Montgomery Dam project, I think this is something that should have some spirited discussion around it, and maybe should be on the ballot when we get around to November, which would be a time when people are much more likely to weigh in because there seems to be a great deal of uncertainty at the moment around what the format of the town meeting actually is going to be. And this is just an appeal, but I think you guys are really missing the boat if you let anything happen to that property without letting us weigh in on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the approval of the board minutes from March 15, 2022. Are there any comments on the draft minutes? Marco?
Yes, on part, let's see here, I'm looking at Part 4B under action items. It says, talking about the day sailors to amend Section F, next to your name and next to Sophie's name, there are just blank spots there. I don't know if they were supposed to be filled in at some point. And then also at the end, it says, retainer motion to change the language as suggested in the letter from the day sailors, replace the following text below in the public landing day sailor agreement. But that information is, it looks like it's, there's a colon there, it looks like it's supposed to be there, but it's not there.
Insert for the actual language.
Yes. Good point. It's not there in the agreement. So those are my.
Under 4B. Okay, any other comments besides that one? Marco, do a motion with that change?
I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes from March 15, 2022 with those additions included.
A second.
Motion made in the second. Any comments, discussion, all those in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much. On to Item 3, which is a number of action items, the first of which is a request from the Camden Area Business Group, but I know it's Cabbage Eric, correct, to hold their annual sidewalk sales on May 13 through May 15, 2022, as a start of Business is Blooming in Downtown Camden. We're lucky to have with us tonight Mr. Eric Anderson. Would you like to address your event so that we can move on it?
I am one of the board chairs of the Camden Area Business Group and a local business operator in Camden. Thank you all for affording the opportunity to remote in today. I am in front of you to seek approval for May 13 through 15 of 2022 to hold our annual, which is when we have scheduled to hold our annual Camden is Blooming event. And what we come before you today is the approval of the town's only sanctioned sidewalk sales. On the second page of the letter that we presented would be also the information passed on to businesses if approved, which would highlight Section 4 of the code that falls under obstruction in public passages. So there's, you know, the town has a really well-written obstruction in passage, public passage code for the sidewalks, which limits obstructions to 48 inches or within feet of intersections, driveways, fire hydrants, all that have been adhered to within the past 10 years. This is actually, would be our 10th year of coming before you and holding this part of the event weekend. May 13 through 15 was chosen by the board as it sits nicely in between Mother's Day weekend as well as Memorial Day weekend. And just a little history for those unaware, Camden is Blooming was an event that was designed to extend the season a little bit, get it away from June, kind of pull it into May, but at the same time, be really focused on local area residents far and wide. And this sidewalk sale has been really welcomed by the shop owners of town, which allows them to purge inventory, get it ready for new space for new items. So this would be a really great, this is kind of really what the weekend has kind of surrounded itself by, but you know, there's other options. There's other events that have partnered well with us, whether it's PAWS Annual Pet Walks or the Camden Garden Club. But we have not done any mass marketing of this event yet, as we always seek approval by the board for this adjustment. Now, I will say just a little bit of what the board's doing right now. There's a lot of reorganization that we're looking at within the industry or within our subset to come before you more so than earlier. As our marketing gets stronger and stronger, we want to make sure that we've got information out there for innkeepers and anybody else that looks to market six months plus.
Great, Eric. Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions of Eric? Oh, Sophie, go ahead.
Do you want?
Yeah, Sophie, go ahead.
My only question is, is there any overlap with the art walks that we have with the Page Gallery?
On Bayview.
On Bayview.
What dates are the 13th to the 15th? I'm sorry.
I can't remember when the art walk starts.
The Thursdays, the Thursday evenings. And they start in May, but I think it's later in May than that. And the 13th to the 15th, what days, Eric? Do you know?
It's Friday, the 13th.
Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Well, that doesn't interfere with the Thursday.
Perfect. Then I have no further question.
I would actually care well.
Right.
Then I would like to make a motion that we approve the Camden Area Business Group to hold their annual sidewalk sales on May 13 through the 15, 2022, as part of Businesses Blooming in Downtown Camden.
A second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Go for it, Eric. It's approved 4-0. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll get the information up to the businesses. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Take care. The next item on our agenda is, again, this is the principal reason for having the meeting tonight, is we're required by charter to approve the order of the Camden Select Board. And in this regard, I would like some of the boards to read the order, enter the record, and then we can move to approve the order.
Okay. So what? Are we going to do it all as one big thing, or are we going to have any comments or discussion?
No, that's, we already had a public hearing on the order. This is for the ballot.
Just the charter.
Yeah, right, right, right. So that, just as formality, Marco, why don't you go ahead and read the order if you can find it there?
Okay, hold on.
If you can't, I will.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Order of the Camden Select Board. Whereas the voters of the town of Camden have by straw poll endorsed a charter amendment to provide for using secret ballot voting pursuant to 30-A MRS 2528 for adoption of the annual budget. Whereas the Select Board has prepared a draft, prepared draft language, published notice and conducted a hearing in compliance with the Charter Amendment statute as found in 30-A MRS 2104. And be it so resolved, the Select Board hereby orders that the final form of the proposed amendment to the Camden Charter as attached heretofore in Schedule A shall be placed as a warrant article before the voters for approval at the June 14, 2022 annual town meeting dated March 21, 2022.
I have a motion to accept the order.
I will make a.
Approved, excuse me. Approved the order.
I will make a motion to accept that order.
Approved, please.
Approve the order.
Right.
A second.
Motion made in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item C, which is approval of the wording of a number of different warrant articles that have been, that are being considered. Again, these, to remind everybody, this is the language discussion, and I believe each one of these, we have, on April 5, we'd be having a public hearing on the, each of these articles for final discussion and approval by the, final approval by the board. So with that, you can see, I think what we wanted to focus on was.
So is this sort of like our opportunity to make comments to staff before the public hearing?
Yes, yes, yes. Anything, anything of, because if we get to that point with the public hearing, any matters in our part of substantive change, we cannot do.
So all we could do at that point would be to pull the whole thing?
Correct, correct. And to the question made earlier, no, we haven't finished all of the, addressing all of the, this is the articles we've crafted to date. So with that, I think there was, we can talk about any one of them, but let's see, I think I know what you wanted to focus on, a couple of three here, because they have not been discussed before. First, I'm trying to find, I'm sorry. The one I was looking for was the moratorium.
Number 11.
Thank you. I went right by it. Number 11.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why it's marked in yellow. The town, we had had a number of discussions about.
Should I bring Jeremy in for this?
Absolutely. Is he there?
Uh, yeah.
Good. Thank you for doing that. This is regarding a potential, whether the town should vote on having a 180-day moratorium from the effective date, which would, shall be March 15, 2022, 180 days to put a moratorium on certain potential piers, docks, floes and ramps located within the Outer Harbor. This was a discussion based on a couple of matters. There's been some discussion and even confusion about the process as drafted currently in our various town documents and versus how we've actually performed those procedures historically. If nothing else, that's an issue that the town should think about, you know, clarifying. Also, there are always, always some concerns about, and confusion about where especially certain floats and other things are allowed and not allowed. So the purpose would give us 180 days to just clarify all of that.
Sea level rise.
And yes, and there are elements to a sea level rise which need to be crafted into our documents. So the people who are, which is typical these days, doing piers or docks will take into consideration a need, a potential need for vertical adjustments as the sea continues to do its thing in this, as currently occurring. So with that, is there any wording? Marco, go ahead. You raised your hand already.
Sophie was first.
So it's not really a wording, so I don't know if you're going to accept my question, but if the effective date is today.
It's last week.
Well, yeah, March 15, but it only gets voted on June 14.
Correct.
If it gets rejected and we start doing the work, could we move the effective date to the date of voting?
I think that Jeremy maybe is.
Yeah, Jeremy, maybe you can help me understand this because.
Standard process for.
It seems to me that we might potentially be doing some work that.
Jeremy, can you answer, you hear the question, Jeremy?
Yep, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so moratoriums can be for 180 days, and that's why the 180 days is in there. And what this ordinance does, this would start that 180 days effective March 15, like the ordinance says and like you're talking about. So technically, yeah, we'll be, for the most part, three months into the moratorium if it does get passed. I don't, you know, I did, I know the Harbor Committee is talking about looking at Sherman's Cove in the Outer Harbor, I think in the next couple of meetings. And I'll certainly be looking at things in the ordinance that we can adjust. So I think there's time that won't be wasted and efforts that won't be wasted, even if it doesn't play out at the moratorium level for voters, because I do think, like Allison mentioned, and you talked about sea level rise, height limits, these other things are serious, their impacts. And I think we should kind of move forward, thinking that we'll have ordinance amendments for November, regardless of if the moratorium passes or not. That would be my recommendation and my thought on it.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Does that make sense, Sophie? Is that kind of what you were looking for?
It makes sense. Thanks, Jeremy.
If we started when the vote is, a lot of the time what happens is it encourages a flurry of applications to try to get in ahead of time and has the exact opposite effect, so.
Marco, go ahead.
My one question in reading it, we just okayed a pier because the people went through the legal.
That's correct.
Steps to.
That's correct.
Do the pier. And the way this reads, there should be no, it says, no prohibit installation, construction, modification of piers, docks, is starting today. The problem with that is, is we okayed somebody, does this, does this stop their ability to build their dock?
No, it would stop anyone that would come in now for any changes after March 15. And Bill and I can clarify, maybe make that a little clearer if you'd like, Marco, but we both reviewed this and we both, you know, I think we're comfortable that this would allow them to continue, but no one, even someone comes in tomorrow, we can't issue a permit for them and we won't issue a permit.
That makes sense, but the way this reads, it prohibits installation, construction and modification, and that would include anybody doing it. So they could not construct their pier. So we need to see.
True, you could say approved after.
Well, the way it is worded is awkward. It does say the applicability shall be March 15, the date of the introduction of the discussion, which was that same night. So I think that, you know, if you made it, you can't make it March 16?
Actually, Bob, you reviewed that the week before the March 15 meeting.
So we're good.
And you have to, it has to be from the first date it was discussed by the Select.
All right, all right. Any other comments? I have one after you do.
Yeah, maybe it's the same one. So I don't think it's the commercial, ooh, I don't think it's commercial marine now, operation, it's commercial marine.
Well, it's more important, it's commercial marine. And I also have a question on that sentence about operations that exist. I want it to be clear in this referendum that does not, it excludes the potential project that Clement Morse is currently contemplating.
Yes, I understand that. I had some other language in here, and Bill and I went back and forth. I'd like to even try to focus it more on residential, solely on residential piers and not on commercial, because this would be the only commercial and we can craft it that way. And I also don't think we want to, I mean, I thought of this, the town can put a pier where it wants to under the harbor ordinance. So I was thinking of exempting municipal and commercial piers potentially and just have it apply to residential. Any thoughts on that?
Well, that's, it sounds like the direction we mentioned during the meeting last time in our discussion. It's just the way it's worded here. This one sentence needs to be modified. Do we have a modification for that sentence that you have, Jeremy? Or do you have to work on it?
I had one. I'll work on it with Bill. There's no need for you to formally have that today necessarily. There's no need for you to formally have that today necessarily, but I, I mean, we can craft it in such a way that it applies to, I could include that it doesn't apply to lots, you know, certain map and lot numbers as well, which would encompass all of Liman Morse's properties.
Well, I'm.
Why don't you do it thoughtfully, maybe, and not just in wordsmithing it in the meeting? I would think that.
Well.
I understand, and we'll get it to you. Yep.
Well, when will you get it to us? It should be, remember, we're going to be finalizing this on April fifth.
Before April?
Yeah, I mean, we can have that, we can have that final language done by Wednesday.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
Allison.
I'm sorry, Allison.
Don't apologize. So I guess, you know, my goal would be for the language to sort of follow as closely as possible to the previous Harbor Committee and Planning Board recommendations. I think that that recommendation before the one that came to the Select Board and then was that three to two vote, and so it never went to voters. I think that included the coastal harbor or or did it not?
It did not. It was just, it was just Sherman's Cove and Outer Harbor there.
Um, you know, that could be dealt with.
In the one that I, in the one that I recall, Allison, I will say that, you know, if you want to go there, then we didn't discuss that on March fifteenth. We were just discussing the Outer Harbor. We didn't talk about the coastal harbor. That wasn't part of the agenda, but.
I think I probably said the words coastal harbor quite a bit, but I mean, it could be done separately, but if you look at what's, I don't know, I think I think I have a pretty good sense of what people think about the Outer Harbor and the Inner Harbor and not wanting more proliferation there. If you look at the reaction in Lincolnville to to piers along, you know, along the bay there, I tend to suspect we should do the same thing with the coastal harbor as well, but maybe the, I mean, they're going to face the same issues with sea level rise, the same.
Yeah, they won't have floats sitting on dry land on, you know, on the.
No, they're more likely to have waves crashing over the top.
Right, yeah.
Because that height limitation that we have is really, I mean, even if you're, if you think piers are the greatest thing in the world, most people don't think they, we should plan for them to be overtopped on a regular basis.
Right.
So I just.
Do we have any applications for coast for for piers to be built in the coastal harbor?
There is an app, there is an application that's been submitted to the Harbor Committee and to the Planning Board in the last, within the last week.
Oh.
That's being, there's a Planning Board's going to have a hearing on that on April seventh, and the and the Harbor Committee is going to review that on April sixth, I believe.
And where is that located, Jeremy?
Um, I believe that's two sixty or it's way Albeville.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I know, yeah.
Way Albeville.
Public space that is really heavily impacted, and these piers are here forever. So I I'm not saying that I think every single place in Camden is inappropriate for a pier, but if we're going to have something there forever, right now, our ordinance doesn't allow them to build higher, three feet or six feet above mean high tide means, which in the last application was deemed to be nine point nine feet or something. Our highest annual tide is already just on the NOAA chart, twelve point seven. So you add three feet of storm surge onto that, and you have that crashing over. I mean, to not let people, we need to update the ordinance so that people can build as high as is reasonable.
Well, the question you're asking, were early asking here is, are we including or not including coastal harbor as well as outer harbor? Is that correct?
I guess I'm making a plea to include in the coastal harbor.
Inner, outer, and coastal, right?
Inner, I believe that we're already covered.
You're already covered.
We're already covered. So outer and coastal.
Coastal.
I I don't have any problems with that. I think we have to be consistent and have the same same regulations for the sea level.
Sea level rise is part of the equation.
Exactly, part of the equation. So I don't have any objection to adding the coastal harbor. The only question I have is, will that stop the current application?
I think we'd be really hard pressed to say that that one is stopped from by this. I mean, I.
This is, this goes on ballot in June fourteenth, and nothing stops until June fourteenth. Is it retroactive is the question.
It is retroactive. That was the previous.
It is retroactive.
The retroactive goes to the date that you guys discussed, the Outer Harbor one, and that was March fifteenth.
Right.
If now, you didn't have this on the agenda, you didn't have the coastal harbor on the agenda. If you want to have that be discussed, I mean, you can't use the March fifteenth date for that because there was no notice, there was no anything on that.
Really? There's not a wording of that, that?
It was on the agenda as outer harbor.
It was.
How does outer and coastal?
Can change the wording, so the discussion of the Outer Harbor is March fifteenth, and then the, and then the coastal harbor is March twenty first.
We could do that.
When we include that, or we amend the wording to include the coastal.
There would be six days difference.
Specify that there's a difference in dates.
And exclude ones that were submitted prior to today?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you, I will say, this one on Outer Bayview has been in the process for three years. They had a death in the family, they had a bunch of issues going on, and so they've had consultants working on this, they've had their DEP and Army Corps permits expire because they hadn't built it yet, and they were trying to get to this Harbor Committee right before COVID happened.
Look.
And then things just fell apart. So this one's been in the works for a long time.
Look, if I'm going, if I'm going to build a pier anywhere in the harbor, either the inner harbor or the coastal harbor, there's sea level rise, I I need to adapt the the project to the reality of the sea level rise of the harbor. So if even if my permit is is approved, if I'm careful about how I'm planning, I'm going to wait to see, you know, what is the guideline to make sure that my construction is going to survive sea level rise. It's kind of common sense.
Frankly, if you, if we go to what Audra suggested, two different dates in six months, what it really does is puts anybody off until the next build season, which would be twenty twenty-three summer. So that's really, that's really what occurs. And here we are in, what are we, end of March, and the odds of this one getting done in the summer is probably limited. So if we do both outer and coastal, then it needs to be the two dates as suggested by Audra.
I think I make a motion that we amend the language to include coastal harbor starting on the twenty first of March.
That's the only change we're contemplating. In addition, in addition to, well, in addition to, well, we don't really need a motion, we need a revised draft.
We didn't, exactly, because we also had issues with the.
Yeah, the moratorium and residential, commercial.
We're still holding a public hearing anyway.
Yes, we are.
So all this is is feedback on wording for them to bring.
We just don't want it on the fifth.
Jeremy, twenty first, coastal, and and a better exclusion of commercial and non-residential.
Limited to residential, excluding commercial and municipal.
Municipal.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want me to, do you want me to craft something to carve out the one that's been most recently submitted, that's been in the works for a few years?
Carve what out?
No, just the article.
We're just talking about article eleven.
No, I'm trying to craft this, do you want this to apply to applications that have been submitted already? Like this one that hasn't been heard by the Planning Board? There's a public hearing scheduled on April seventh. There is also, the Harbor Committee's going to hear it on April sixth.
Jeremy, Jeremy, you can't, remember, this is, you, somebody explained it, Audra, or somebody, this is voted on on June fourteenth. If it gets passed, if it gets passed by the voters, then the activities this group is talking about on April sixth could be negated. They need to know that.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean they can't have their, it may be voted down by the.
Yeah, understood.
All right?
Understood.
All right. Thank you.
Since we're talking about an application, and there was such discrepancy about the way that the last one came to us.
In the process.
In the process, it, the ordinance says that the Harbor Committee reviews these first, provides a recommendation to the Select Board, then the Select Board goes through the criteria, and then and only then does it go to the Planning Board for site plan review. And the process is done, was done differently, and I understand that that was, had been made common practice by a request from a previous Select Board wanting it to go to the Planning Board first. But the ordinance says that it goes Harbor Committee, then Select Board, then Planning Board, and I think we should get back to that.
That's the process I was referring to.
Because site plan review doesn't happen until a project is allowed to go forward. So the, what the, what the job of the Harbor Committee is, is to get the Select Board started on reviewing the criteria, because it's not a given that new piers are allowed anywhere. There are circumstances under which they are allowed, but the Harbor, the Harbor Committee many times over the years has recommended against approving new piers, new pier applications in the Outer and Coastal Harbor. So having that then go to the Select Board, for the Select Board to determine conceptually whether, based on the criteria, it should go to site plan review with the, with the Planning Board is what. And if we can't settle that tonight, then can we at least, I mean, because that was said very clearly to me afterwards from the discussion last time, that, yeah, Allison, what we're doing is going with what's been done and not with what is written in the ordinance. It does say it really clearly in the ordinance, and other people pointed that out to me as well.
Okay.
Well, again.
We all agree here, I think.
Yeah, I just, I think we agreed on the language.
Jeremy might not, but.
The moratorium and.
I, I don't, I don't agree, but.
But we'll settle it.
Bill Kelly and I, we'll chat a little bit, we'll figure it out, Allison.
But if it does say that in the ordinance, we'll go with what the ordinance says and not with what past practice has been.
But this is, but this is, we're talking about just voting on the moratorium here.
No, no, but it just, I didn't feel like there was, he said there's going to be a public hearing on April seventh and.
Fifth. Oh, six, yeah.
And I don't think the Planning Board should hold public hearings on site plan review when the ordinance says it goes to the Select Board first.
Hmm, this is what I referred to earlier, is the language needs to be, that's why we want the moratorium, so we can adjust the language, because the process is described in the paperwork is is not what we followed for the last, what, fifteen, twenty years? So, you know, for whatever reason, that stuff happens like that. But let's, let's get this article recrafted for final, the final, the public hearing on Select Board meeting, next which will be April five, next get regular scheduled. The, I think the, by the way, when I'm skipping by a lot of these articles here because they're standard, the ones are usually in the town, in the town, what do we call it, the report? And they're, they're, they're standard language, we're not going to be changing those. Article sixteen, however.
Article fifteen is very important.
I believe this is one we've had in the town meeting.
You excluded a very key.
Oh, did?
Okay, I'll tell you why. That's not as important because of article seventeen. So you might want to skip to article sixteen.
Okay.
Well, we wanted, we.
As we do with many warrants, the town will vote on whether they approve of the, of the town, the Select Board approving an eventually negotiated purchase and sale agreement with the Crane Sport for that property. That, of course, we put in here to be careful about the farmer's market, to make sure people know we're considering that. And I agree with Allison's point, too. I, I think if we put in the sale price, it's kind of oversell. You know, I don't want to oversell it either. I mean, I want people to be able to ask the questions or look at things like that.
Well, I just, I just.
My point's the opposite, but.
I just think if you don't let the town come back and look at what you're negotiating, it's totally.
Tom, you've made the point three times. No, thank you. Ray, did you have a quick comment? Because I got to get moving here. Thank you, Ray. Sorry you had to wait.
Ray and Grayson Cove Road. Just a quick question. If this is approved by the voters, as it's written, does that erase all of the guiding principles on that property, such as keeping the trees that are along Washington Street?
Those, we, those, I can tell you that's already been discussed, and those elements are being included.
I'm sorry?
Those elements are being considered, being.
Are you being considered but not included?
Well, I, we haven't gotten through all the detail, but I know we did this, we did discuss that when Audra's, I recall, about the trees on Washington Street.
I want to know what the non-negotiables are. So that's a non-negotiable for me, but is there anything legally in there?
Binding?
No, the seven guiding print or.
But some of those guiding principles were really fought over by the people of this town, and they should be included with, in whatever agreement, if we, if the voters decide to give you the property, the authority to sell that property, some of those things should be included in there.
Well, remember, this has, this has, remember, this should be included in there.
By the way, this.
Do you want them all included in there?
I don't have all seven memorized. I just know about the trees.
The trees, the trees, when I remember, too, by the way, I, that one is in my crop, trust me.
Those are, those are town shade trees. They can't be taken down by, only the tree warden can.
Yeah.
They would, they would have to be diseased or some, they would have to be hazard trees.
Okay. You're on the record now, so that's okay. Bye. Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much. Again, back to the question of the article sixteen, I'm not hearing any recommended changes or.
No, negotiate, we.
I do think that it's, that getting in something about negotiating, that it's, as it stands now, I could see somebody reading this and assuming that there was a purchase and sales agreement existing that could be reviewed or something, or, but really what it's author, if we could get to the heart more of what it would be authorizing us to negotiate, you know.
We could use the word negotiate instead of enter. What do you think of that, Audra?
No, you need to have negotiate and enter, because you need, enter is what delegates authority from the voters to the Select Board to actually execute an agreement.
So you're saying negotiate and enter.
Yes, because we really are asking for the ability to do both.
All right. Let me just write that down so I don't forget it.
Yeah.
Now, I have a question that's going to be probably perceived as a little bit annoying, but is, does this exclude our ability, so say we, say voters approve this, and we go through this whole negotiation?
Yep.
And it's three to all really polished or whatever, and what we want to do is put it out to voters. Does it, would this?
Preclude us from putting it out to voters?
This wouldn't keep us from.
No.
Individ, from deciding as a board that we wanted it to go to.
No, because I, and just to be clear, even though this warrant article would delegate, you know, the authority for you to enter and negotiate and enter into a purchase and sales agreement, it doesn't force you to do that. So if you're not able to come to an agreement, you don't have to even, you know, you don't have to move forward with it.
Right.
So likewise, what Allison was saying, you know, if you are all sort of at a point where you get through this and you feel, you know, uncomfortable with making the decision on your own, you do have the ability to put out the final agreement to voters. It's just sort of giving you the flexibility to move this forward if you feel like you've come to terms.
Right.
And you do have, you know, definitive.
Right.
Of authority from voter.
Right, there is a, that's a good point to make, Audra. I think it's a, there are scenarios that say we won't be able to effectively consummate or have an agreed purchase and sale with Crane Sport for whatever reason, and it may cause the deal to crash. That's a possibility in negotiating sessions. This is not a blank check where, again, yet there has to be, this is partially a vote of trust of the town Select Board, town staff, you, Audra, and the staff, and Bill Kelly, your attorney, to do, to look out, as they do in all contracts, for the, for the best interests of the town.
Partial parts of the agreement, because that could influence the vote one way or the other, instead of just giving us the ability to negotiate the deal.
So we should take out the farmer's market one?
You can take it out if you want.
Well, you're, I'm just asking you, that's the point you just made.
No, because I think the farmer's market is a separate deal than putting in the money and making the deal more promising than it may end up being.
Sophie, do you have any opinion of the money?
I mean, for me, it's, it's not essential to put the purchase price. If it, it's a nice piece of information for the voters to know what the purchase price, what purchase price we're contemplating. It's just an additional piece of information. I.
You go ahead, keep talking.
I'll go, I'll go with the majority, frankly, because it's not, for me, it's not a deal breaker either way.
I'm no offense with it, because in fairness, I want this to be the voters, I mean, it does reference, excuse me one second, that the voters do have a reference to a, a proposal. And in all fairness, I think most voters are not going to go read the proposal. They're going to read a few paragraphs of this. Well, it depends, Allison, I'm sorry, that 3,000, I don't know how many people vote in June, probably more like 1,500, 2,000, but, but the propensity of voters that I know of, they, if there was a purchase and sale agreement in the office for them to review, they wouldn't, they wouldn't look at it. And, and many people, if they did, would not understand it. Because, you know, and I understand the need for a very effective, strong purchase and sales agreement to protect the interests of the town, of the neighbors, of the community, of all the things we talked about here tonight. That is not lost in us. And again, I come back to, if the voters are going to have to some point make a vote on whether or not they want, there is a trust factor here on two factors. One, the potential use, the potential use of the, of the property, and also trusting the town staff, town staff and select board in making a good decision on whatever comes to fruition, if it comes to fruition.
Yeah, Wayne Ruswick, I live at Washington Street. Is it the intent to come to an agreement with Mr. Mullins before this goes to vote?
We're not going to put a schedule on it because there's too many, there's too many moving parts in this whole package, not the least of which is the brownfield issues we're dealing with, and as, and remember Steve Gold asking.
So the real question of 16 is whether we trust you to make a good decision on this piece of property.
I'm sorry? Say it again?
Yes.
No, it's not, no, 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 no. It's also, it's also.
We're, we're entering into a blind trust of you, is what we're doing.
No.
This is the process we use on.
Why can't we delay until fall when we can get a full proposal and a purchase and sale that we can? And I'm sorry that you think the population is so ignorant, they won't read it, but I would like to know what's going to be in the purchase and sales before I agree with.
Good. Well, like I said, it's, it's crafted because we, we have, we also have a schedule to get the brownfield cleanup done, and we can't keep delaying on that. This, what you're suggesting is exactly what Allison referred to has happened for the last 15, 20 years. Every time we come close, there's somebody that wants to do something more, a different, a different round, different approach, and the select boards in the past have, logically, we could too, saying, no, let it go, screw it, we don't want to do it. So this, this is very simply a ballot measure for the voters to, as much information as they want is available, but it's to authorize, as they commonly do, for us to enter into a negotiated settlement on a negotiated contract based on a proposal. Yes.
And there's, if I may add, there's, and I'm new to the select board, I'm the junior member here, how many people have told me when I ran for the select board last year, the select board does nothing about the tannery? Nothing. And we're putting in front of the voters, you know, do you want us to continue exploring a sale and purchase agreement with the Crane's Port proposal or not? That's basically the questions, the question we're putting in front of the voters.
Right.
Because we have so many things that require our attention. We're here tonight on a special board meeting because we don't have enough time in our regular schedule to, to tackle all the items on our to-do list. So for me, the reason why we're putting this on the ballot, so I think I understand the concerns and, and the doubts and a little bit of, you know, wondering what really is in the mind of the select board. What we want is where do you want us to put our energy? Because trust me, it's a lot of work to work on one of the 22 priorities we have identified for the board. And we just want to make sure that we're moving in a direction. Because if we go down the line of negotiating a sales and purchase agreement with Michael, and we work eight months to get to a November vote, and you tell us no?
It is a lot of factors here, and, and just for the record, I never called the electorate ignorant. I never used that word.
You did, but.
No, I said they don't have the time to get into reading all this information. If you want to use the word ignorant, I did not use that word. Go back and look at the recording. I would never use that word about the electorate. I said, I asked a question of whether you think the electorate is not informed or adequate of a previous spokesman. I did say that, but don't put words in my mouth, please. I didn't to you.
All right, you used a different semantic of it, but that is.
No big deal. I just wanted, I just want to be careful. But to your, to your point, you're absolutely correct. This is just a referendum to say, people, do you want to head in this direction with that site? And try, and I trust that we will do our best job to get, to get, it never knows. There wasn't, as you all know, was listening to the budget committee, there wasn't a lot of changes of your recommendations, Audra, by the budget.
No, I'd say that the biggest changes came from information that, that was received after the fact that, you know, I explained to the budget committee and they, you know, supported the changes, like, you know, the, the rates for the hydrant system and.
Yep.
A few other things where I received additional information, oh, the northeast contract.
Yes.
And other areas where we received additional information after the fact. So I'd say that those were the most substantive changes that were in the budget from.
Okay. So we, we have obviously a limited time period because we must approve the budget before April 12th, is that right?
Five.
I would, well, fifth meeting, you're having the public hearing for the warrant.
Yes. Oh, okay, okay, thank you, thank you. So that should, that, we saw the blanks that we haven't filled in yet. So logically, we'd probably be looking to do it the week of the 28th, next week, sometime during that week of the 28th of March.
Anything but Friday the 1st.
Yeah, anything but Monday, I'm in Boston, the 28th.
Twenty, 20th, because that would be our normal, the Tuesday, that'd be our normal meeting.
29.
We have a board on the 29th?
No, April 5th.
Well, we could do it on the 29th.
Because you're gonna.
Allison?
I was just gonna let you guys decide and hope for the best, but.
Well, I had to ask two questions. B is the Budget Review Committee, the date, and also the time. Can there be any flexibility in a time like 6:00 rather than 6:30?
Yeah, or even 5:00 after the cemetery association.
That's a tougher schedule.
Let's do them back to back.
It has to be unanimous. We're not going to change the time unless it's unanimous.
I think 5:00 would be pushing it a little bit for me.
I was saying it's 5:30, 6:00.
That would be better.
Which, which would you prefer? 6:00.
It's not any, I'd rather let other people just.
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM on the 29th.
6:00 PM on the 29th, yes.
You prefer the 30th?
No, like, 30 is a problem for me.
I'll save my.
Let's, okay, okay. Okay, 6 o'clock on the 29th, Audra, which is a Tuesday, all right? And that'll be budget, that'll be agenda item for budget only. The, now, related to that, because we want to be efficient as we possibly can, we've all listened to the budget committee meetings and blah, blah, blah. Are there any, for questions we want to lay on the table now so that Audra can prepare her staff to provide certain, we don't want to, that meeting's going to be a make it or break it meeting. We won't be timed to say, we'll go check on something about the harbor or about the public safety or whatever. If there's any questions we have that we know of, we can ask questions about the numbers, what's in them and all those kinds of things, and even change them if we want. But is there any questions? I know I have a couple, but just because I do, and it may help Audra to, well, first of all, we probably should have directors available, Audra, for the meeting, so that they can, you know, jump in on.
Department heads, you mean, or what do you mean, director? Oh, like, okay, yes, sorry. Yeah, I guess.
I call them directors, department heads, but all right, to be available. But are there, you have any questions, Sophie? Have any consequence? Mark, do you?
No.
Do you want me to go first? Well, only a couple little ones, and because I don't want to get into, there's one related to the library, and I just want to know whether or not they have agreed to pay the change or the, of the $13,000 the town paid for one of their change orders.
I thought we did that last year.
Um, I have not heard any.
You don't have to answer it now, you don't have to answer it now, you just have to know it's a question.
Oh, sorry.
I wouldn't expect you, well, the reason is, is because we've paid that bill, and it's not a bill the taxpayers of Camden should be paying, if it's not our change order. This is related to the one versus two tanks, the propane tanks, that's all, just a question. The other one, it's just, I'm, you know, I'm a bit of a stickler for transparency, and and we always, and I've driven hard, and we won't be discussing snowball, but I'm often talking about what's, and Audra did a great job, and the budget committee is saying, just so you know, people, these things are in the general fund. She was being transparent. There's one that I get confused about often, it's the Opera House. I know the Opera House budget that's in there is, is black and white, it's pretty clear. But on the side, bookkeeping, there is, bookkeeping done for events, for rentals, for events. And that has to have an annual net, positive or negative, whatever it is. And then, is there a way for them to give us that information of that net, positive or negative, whatever it is, for 2019, 20 and 21? Because I expect 21 was probably disaster. But, well, there's COVID and all that kind of stuff, but, but the reason is, is because we just want people to understand clearly what the, what the generation and then objective to break even on those events is, and how successful we are or not.
I can say, I think Dave in his memos to us in the update, he gives us whatever he has up to that point. I think he should be able to break it down by year.
Okay.
And I think he should be able to do that, and so we can see what, see what they have.
And I guess we, I guess Audra would be best to go by fiscal year, I guess.
Well, you know what I'm going to do? It's in your audit, it's in the yearly audit. So I'm just going to get that data from the audit and present it.
If it's there, it's there. I just, just ask the question, Audra. You don't have to, you know, to provide it now, or, she's frozen, Audra. Nice smile.
That was funny timing.
That is easier to understand.
You blacked out there for a minute.
Sorry, I think I froze and I lost you all for.
It's just a question, Audra, that's all. You understand I'm coming from, I just want people to understand that the shows do well. Or they don't, and it's okay. It's like a snowball, it does well or it doesn't, it's just being transparent, that's all.
And so I have one, actually.
Please.
Audra, I think last year at the budget committee, I had requested to have one spreadsheet with all the personnel. And how, you know, because we have Steve Pixley and his half on the harbor committee and the snowball, I think it would be super useful to have this, this spreadsheet to see where everybody is and where do they draw the salaries. If, if it's not, if it's too much work to do this year, I'm just respectfully asking that we do it for next fiscal year, because I think it's a piece of information that would be useful for the budget committee. And for me.
For us, yeah, for us, yeah.
Sounds like a future request. Okay. Allison, go ahead.
So just to follow up on the, the Opera House thing, I'm not sure that your question gets the heart of just the overall, because there's also revenues from rental that.
Yeah, they're different.
That are.
Different, yeah.
And so just as in other places where we have, you know, an expense side and a revenue side, and that always, it's the way our budget is presented, it's, it's a confusing thing to people. It makes it hard for them to get the questions, like, get the answers in the way that we're used to, like, just being able to answer, how much do we spend on the Opera House? I fumble that answer, just, I hear myself trying to explain it, and I, and it, I sound evasive to myself. So I, if we could make sure that, you know, just sort of the basics, the expenses, and then, and I know there's a little confusion with it intertwined with the building and stuff, but then the revenues from rental, and then the shows also, just all sort of net-net, this is the taxpayer contribution to, you know, Opera House programming.
Yeah, but, but we also have to take into account the grants, because this, in the past two years.
All of it, the grants.
Yeah, the grants, everything in the revenue side, because Dave has a great job.
Everything in the revenue side.
Right.
Every Opera House revenue.
Yep, okay, that's fine, that's fine. That's, yeah.
And the Opera House expenses, and then.
That's the heart of it, yep. Any other questions? No. So we, well, let's move on to our last item that we have to discuss, which is the default on payment of the sewer use fees by the town of Rockport for quarter one and two bills. Audra, do you want to lead us into the, the view from 30,000 feet?
Absolutely, and I thought I would prepare something to kind of get everyone through it, and I know that the select board has a more insight to sort of what's going on than the general public.
Yep.
So I am going to lay out some things that will be redundant for all of you, but I think will be really important so that the community, the broader community can sort of understand, you know, where we're at and how we got here. So there are instances where I bring you issues, I bring you the select board issues that need to be resolved, that are premised on changing circumstances, that really necessitate the town reconsidering or reapproaching how we address these issues, or even how we do business. But this is not one of those issues. So the environmental and financial considerations that were really foundational to, you know, Camden's leadership, so select board members and other community leaders back in the time, and also the voters of Camden agreeing to accept Rockport's wastewater back in 1989 and 1990, when it was, you know, originally approved, the inter-local agreement between the two towns are just as relevant today as they were, you know, 30 years ago, 30-plus years ago. And I'd say if not, if not more so. So some of these issues include that were, you know, very well-considered by, you know, Camden leadership at the time, and were really important to Camden residents and voters, were things like, you know, persistent water quality issues in Camden Harbor, Camden's inflow and infiltration issues within our collection system that caused sanitary sewer overflows during heavy rain events, and exceedances to our permit with the DEP. There were concerns raised by residents and visitors with the level of treatment applied to wastewater, and that was even when the town was in the limits of our DEP permit. They were still concerned with the quality of effluent that was released into the harbor. And things like Camden being unable to expand our sewer service in strategic locations in the town, which was, you know, could be compounded by increasing flow from Rockport, and you could argue is still an issue now that we, you know, have an agreement and they're sending us increasingly more flow. Also ensuring that Camden ratepayers and residents were not and are not financially burdened by agreeing to treat wastewater from Rockport. So both towns entered into the 1990 inter-local agreement, knowing that the barrier to entry and ongoing service provided by Camden to Rockport was premised on the issues above that I just sort of went through being considered in perpetuity. And Camden's currently facing a situation where Rockport is in arrears on the first quarter of their wastewater payment for this financial year, which was due on November 30th of 2021. They've, they haven't paid the full amount, they still owe us $66,217 and change from that bill. And they've completely defaulted on their second quarter payment, which was due on February 28th, for $77,106 and change. And since the agreement, inter-local agreement from 1990 expired in February 26th of 2020, both towns have operated under the terms of this expired agreement that, you know, kind of enable us and allow us to treat, to accept and treat Rockport's wastewater. And this agreement also determined how, you know, the issues that I outlined when I first started telling you about this would be addressed through our user rates that were charged to Rockport wastewater customers for the services that we provided to them. And it was premised on Rockport ratepayers being charged the same rate as Camden ratepayers, and then in a, assess an additional quarterly payment of $2.25 per 100 cubic feet of actual metered sewage exceeding the customer count times 1,000 cubic feet. Now, I'm bringing that up because that is something that we've never really applied to rates, that last part. It's always just stayed at, you know, what the Camden rate was is what stood for Rockport as well, and that is what their ratepayers paid. So given Rockport's recent escalating wastewater user rates, there was a desire by their board back in 2021, and political leadership in Rockport, to find a quick and easy solution to the problem. So, you know, instead of them looking at the high cost of internal operational expenses, better understanding the financial impact of expanding their system, and how this impacted debt service payments, and therefore their own rates, or even how their inter-local agreement with the city of Rockland played into the calculation of their rates. They really focused on, hyper-focused, what I would, you know, is kind of how I would put it, on the 12.4% of their expenses that can be attributed to the inter-local agreement with Camden and the fees that Camden levied. So this led to Rockport disregarding the environmental and financial issues that really underpinned the original 1990 inter-local agreement, which was pretty fundamental to Camden ratepayers and the taxpayers in agreeing in the first place to accept and treat Rockport's wastewater, both back in 1990, but also into the future. And they did this in favor of unilaterally refashioning an inter-local agreement and a method of assessing user rates. So the agreement that was proposed by Rockport, you know, counter to the agreement, you know, either renewing the 1990 inter-local agreement, or them sort of working with us on an agreement that was very similar in the issues that it addressed in 2020.[1788.54] or them sort of working with us on an agreement that was very similar in the issues that it addressed in 2020. It was updated, but it was very similar in, you know, kind of following all the considerations that everybody agreed were important in 1990. They wanted to set Rockport's user rate based on what they determined to be portions of Camden's collection system and administrative and operational expenses that only applied to Rockport. The problem is even by the terms of Rockport's proposed agreement and the application of their own logic to fairly apportion costs, the user rate that Rockport arrived at and unilaterally decided to pay Camden for in the first quarter of 2022 was incorrect because it represents an 89% reduction in the user rates for Rockport ratepayers over what's paid by Camden ratepayers. And while this underpayment or non-payment of wastewater user rates by Rockport is serious, I would say it's just representative of a much more serious and fundamental issue between the towns. And that is that there is a disregard of promises that were made in the past to address the ongoing impacts of the environmental and financial burdens placed on Camden in accepting and treating Rockport's waste. And I think these burdens are only going to increase as the cost to treat wastewater rise. And we know that's going to happen due to things like our permit this year is going to require us to chlorinate our wastewater year-round. That's going to have an increased expense. I think that we all know that we're going to be facing forthcoming regulations regarding sludge disposal and PFAS. And also, you know, we continue to have problems with INI water quality. And also, we have a need to put our residents and our businesses first when we want to consider, you know, any discussion around expanding the wastewater system. So, you know, those are sort of all the things that I think kind of led us to the point we're at now and the reason why it's been very, very difficult to come to some sort of agreement where Camden's historic considerations that are also our current and future considerations are addressed and Rockport feels like, you know, it's also giving them what they believe is important, which is reducing user rates. So, you know, that's kind of the first part I wanted to throw out. So, you know, before I go into, you know, maybe recommendations on remedying, I wanted to see if there were any, you know, questions from the board or other pieces of information that I haven't really appropriately conveyed to all of you about this issue or haven't communicated well to the public about it.
Allison, do you, well, Mark, your question?
Well, I have a question. I just want to sort of simplify it. So basically, as we all know, oil, the price of oil has gone up tremendously in the last few months. And so when I get my heating oil bill, the price of my heating oil has gone up. And it's, it's not any fault of the supplier of the heating oil. It's what they have to pay as well. So our prices have gone up and, as I understand it, our people are paying what the rates are because it's what we set. But Rockport has separately decided that, well, that's too much money for our people, so we want to pay less. It's, it's as if I went to my oil company and said, I'm sorry, gasoline is, or oil is too expensive. I don't want to pay that much, so I'm going to pay less. I don't have the right to do that. I don't have a right to do it with CMP. It's not fair. And I don't understand the logic that they have, that they think that they're allowed to, their users are allowed to pay less than Camden users for the same product. And it's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mark. I think that the cost thing that we, yeah, there is that issue that's lingering right in front of us, but Audrey made the illusion, the discussion about the environmental, the history kind of thing. I think I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Allison?
Oh, so I would love to just share my screen for a moment here and
Top left.
And then come down here.
Oh, okay. Okay. You got it up here. Yeah.
So I went back through just to make sure that I understood everything, and I didn't. One of the first things that we, I think a lot of us did when we got on the Select Board is we went over to the wastewater plant with officials from Rockport. We learned about the upgrades and it was a really hard thing for me to understand sort of the interlocal agreement and exactly how that worked. What's interesting is that, you know, it coincided with, the big upgrades to the treatment plant coincided with the expiration of the, of the interlocal agreement. And I remember those of us, like John French, who were on, had been on the Select Board for much longer, said, oh, you know, the interlocal agreement's coming up for renegotiation, the interlocal agreement. And I heard that over and over again, like, that's, you know, that's something you're going to need to pay attention to. And eventually that, you know, became clear. And so I went back and looked through all the old Camden heralds for sort of the history of how this agreement came to be and what were the reasons that Camden voters ultimately approved it after a lot, a lot of discussion and kind of to try to see, like, what were they thinking of then? What is the, what, you know, is the same and what is different? What I thought was funny is immediately, like, these headlines started coming up, like, Rockport Sewer, it's a problem no one wants to pay for. Should Camden take Rock, you know, should Rockport use Camden Sewer Plant? So to go through just a tiny bit of the, of the history here, this is what was said to voters in 1968, right before it was approved and the wastewater treatment plant was approved in 1969. So Camden really sort of recognized early that we're going to have to get out ahead of this in 1956 with the passing of the Federal Pollution Control Act, which was really the start of the whole, like, Clean Water Act stuff and the effort to get everything cleaned up. Camden by 1963 had added something to our, or 1962 had amended the comprehensive plan to reflect the urgent need to comply with this. By 1965, we were applying for grants. The federal government, when they first mandated this, they made massive amounts of funding available because they, they knew it was going to be expensive. So Camden got right out ahead of that. There were things that you had to follow. It cost voters some money, but they, you know, these articles over and over and over again. It was like in the paper like every week. There was a big investment in understanding that in order to get that first round of big funding, we were going to have to do this. And it cost everybody in town money. It wasn't just, it wasn't just the people that were going to hook up to the system. It was a town-wide, all taxpayers were going to have to pay for this no matter, no matter where you lived. And so they, they did this. There were all these articles about why it was important to act then. And so eventually, when it came to, you know, Camden having this treatment plant in place and then Rockport really, you know, the problem was a little bit smaller in Rockport. They didn't have as much industry. So it was largely, like, a lot of private residences that had these direct pipes. They talk about the 16 or so direct pipes that existed in Clam Cove and Rockport Harbor. And it was really sort of the problem of private property owners until some residents got together and said, hey, Rockport, you have to deal with this as a town. But what, the reason that it first came to Camden is that it was private developers in Rockport that said, because Rockport didn't have a sewer system and all these laws were starting to come into place. If you wanted to build a hotel, if you wanted to build more housing, you're going to have to be able to hook up to a sewer system. So private developers started coming to Camden saying, hey, just like, you know, ones that were relatively close to the town line and saying, hey, we're willing to pay double if, you know, you'll let us hook up in, from Rockport, let us hook up into your system. And so that started to be a topic of Camden Select Board meetings and then some, there were a few more developers that wanted to do this. And then the business community here in Camden, many of which had to, you know, comply with our zoning rules, limiting the number of rooms in hotels and limiting all these things, they said, what the heck? You know, this is totally unacceptable. We have all these rules that we have to comply with. We as residents and business owners, we're paying to fund this only to have, you know, somebody build something right over the town line, not have to comply with any of our zoning rules and then send their sewage to Camden. So they were not, not pleased and the first attempts at getting Camden to say yes to taking Rockport's sewage failed because of that. A lot more, just, you know, so many different articles about the problems that they faced. Then here, so we got to, these were some of the things that were said. These were actually paid advertisements run in, in the paper here. And so some of these main things were that basically this, it's sort of like a rebranding of it, like, we're going to make this really beneficial to Camden because we want Camden to say yes. So, you know, some of these things that were ultimately the reason that Camden voters said yes was that the, so Camden wastewater treatment plant was operating at less than a quarter of its total capacity at the time. Rockport's wastewater contributions would be about 5% of the total capacity. And so what they said then is, okay, we've got this, this plant that we built for a bunch of, like, the Knox Mill and the, some of the, some of the big industrial users. And they were closing. And so there was this, this plant that was under capacity and they said, yeah, you know, we do, we know we have this big INI problem of a bunch of groundwater getting in, but if we can solve that problem, then we've got all this extra capacity and we can use Rockport's sewage to generate revenue for us. And so all of the discussions was, it was that the Rockport, the user fees from Rockport were going to be this great opportunity to fund our own, just, you know, solving our own problems. There was a rule from the DEP that for every additional gallon of raw sewage from Rockport, it was promised that two gallons of inflow and infiltration would be eliminated and the Rockport user fees would pay for it. Overflow problems at the Bayview Street Pump Station were supposed to be solved, completely solved by this agreement that we had with Rockport. Revenue from Rockport would help pay for the expansion, household sewage from Rockport, and this was another interesting one, that it was going to, the idea was that the household sewage from Rockport was really going to help dilute and sort of combine well with the industrial waste from Camden. And so a lot of these things that were like helping people to say, like, okay, I guess maybe we could take the, those stuff from Rockport, those things aren't true anymore. One of the things that happened, which I think is important for us to remember as we're thinking about, you know, this is, this is where the effluent pipe is, right over here by the wind jammers. And if you've ever heard people, it, it's noticeable sometimes. It has a water quality impact. There's only a certain, very small percentage of the, you know, total things that go in the water that, you know, can actually be removed by our treatment process. So you've got one of the most beautiful harbors in the world here. And not surprisingly, when Rockport did at one point in 1989 get to the point where they were about to build a treatment plant in Rockport Harbor, there was going to have an effluent pipe in Rockport Harbor, a number of community groups filed suit against Rockport and said, no way. We want, we want to use this as an opportunity to clean up Rockport Harbor. We don't want a bunch of chlorinated water. We don't want all this stuff. We want to send the waste to Camden. And so at the time, Camden was a really industrial place where there were a lot of industrial users. And it was kind of like, well, you know, Camden Harbor's already, we already got that pipe there where everybody's wastewater is going. Now there's a really different feeling about the value of Camden Harbor and the impact. And so for some of the same reasons that Rockport said, no way, no thanks, I think, you know, we have an obligation to kind of look through that as well. These are just more articles about all, you know, all of the different things. And so this is our violation notice from the DEP, which, you know, really shows that the revenue that we got from Rockport has been maybe helpful, but it hasn't been enough to solve all of the problems that were promised to Camden voters we were going to solve. And so I think, you know, looking at initially when this came up for renewal, it was, I think both towns clearly have seen it as an opportunity. Rockport has seen it as an opportunity to renegotiate a lower rate. Like surely we should just be able to renegotiate a lower rate with Camden. And we've seen it as an opportunity to really look at what is beneficial to Camden. We agreed for those 30 years to take the waste under certain set of conditions and now we have to look at that, like, what really is beneficial to Camden? This is Rockport's system here and you can see about, really about two-thirds of it goes, this is the part that goes to Camden, which is, which is like Route 90, you know, everything from the high school, the village, the larger portion of it goes to Camden. And then this smaller portion here goes to Rockport. They Rockland, excuse me, yes. And so one of the things that, you know, they've been doing, I kind of thought, this is, this is great. When they started to say, you know what, we don't, we want to determine our own destiny. We want to expand. Maybe we'll just look into building our own treatment plants. And at first I thought, oh, no, the revenue that would be lost from that. But it's not even, it's about the same amount of revenue that we get from Midco Solid Waste and the, it's, to that amount of wastewater coming into Camden Harbor, it's, it's just not worth it to us, especially if they want to, to grow substantially. And so to be thinking about, do we really want all of the, all of the wastewater from the whole region to be coming down into Camden Harbor? They did a $4.8 million expansion on, on Route 1 over the summer. And what they, what they, one of the things that they said that really alarmed me is, well, this is going to be great because we're going to be connecting our two sewer systems, our two different systems. And that's going to mean that if either Rockland or Camden has capacity issues in the future, we can just reroute the sewage to either one or the other. And they've actually been warned in 2015, DEP sent a letter to, to Rockport warning them that both Camden and Rockland have capacity problems. And so when we're looking at doing things like long-term goals that we have, like expanding the sewer system on John Street, it, that's the same pump station that Rockport enters into. And so I think, you know, this is, like, when you think about our biggest asset and whether, you know, what it should take for us to be willing to accept additional wastewater, we should be looking at reducing and not increasing, especially, you know, in the future, hopefully we'll, we'll look at a higher level of treatment. Right now we only do secondary treatment. During the winter, we're not even chlorinating at this point. And so I think that just as the Select Board in Camden and the voters in Camden negotiated really hard the last time, they had to be really convinced that this was going to be better for Camden, we have to do the, the same thing. And for us, it's, would be money in order to be able to really improve, improve things. And we are not in a position at all, certainly to be giving any discount at all to, to Rockport. And really there needs to be, just like there was at the initial agreement, they were required to give, to pay $560,000 towards eliminating the INI in Camden. They had to pay a one-time fee of like $130,000 for other things. They had to pay for the chlorinization system for Camden. There were all these extra things in addition to the rate that were put in there. And so this was, this was our opportunity with the renegotiation of the interlocal agreement to say, what does Camden need now? And instead, they just did, shockingly, the exact opposite of, instead of saying, well, let's make sure that Camden's still willing to take our wastewater for the next 30 years or however long, they said, this just really isn't as valuable a service as they're saying and we'll just give them, you know, a portion of it. So I'm actually personally really, when we look at our water quality problems that we know we have in Camden Harbor, when we look at our overflow problems, it's actually a really great opportunity for us to, to eliminate a little bit of this and and to say, okay, officially, we're, we're saying it's no longer in the best interest of Camden to take Rockport's wastewater. And we encourage you and we wish you the best and we'll get them on a schedule so that they, but we need to know, they've been saying that they are going to go somewhere else and that they're doing all these studies. And so I think what we really need to hear from them is when can we expect that to be? How are we going to resolve this payment issue in the meantime?
Well, I think you're correct. I think it'd be more dramatic though to, there seems to be an element here of finance. Now, Audrey, they haven't paid for two quarters. They paid what they decided they wanted to pay per 100 cubic foot rate of less than a dollar. Camden's currently at, currently at about $8 or $9 for a rate. I believe Rockland is around $6 or $7 roughly in this.
Yeah, we're at $8.25.
Right. And Rockland, I believe, is somewhere in the order of $6 something. But they decided that 93 that 93.7 cents, whatever it is, is the right rate to pay. And that amounts to, can you just, for the audience, tell them how much money that is that they haven't paid?
So it's a total of about approximately 145,000, but it represents an 89% fee discount over what Camden ratepayers pay.
So we have this financial issue going on in parallel with these environmental issues about, you know, where, where they're going to go in the future, um, a history that was very good to tell us about. That's always something we lose as, well, my year is five and the select board is relatively short in comparison to the history that Allison just played on the screen. So we have one issue with the payment issue, we have a second issue regarding the environmental position we want to take, and, um, yeah, I, I doubt, um, I would like to think that any entity would be doing its due diligence to determine, you know, required to determine where their increased $6 million investment on Route 1 was going to go, and to my knowledge, they haven't spoken to Rockland or Camden about taking on that original burden. And they had mentioned in one of the articles that, uh, one of the statements that I believe John Duke made, that we're not negotiating per the agreement, where the agreement was. Where the agreement was, in one of the slides, showed that there was a fixed amount expected coming from Rockport. So you would think that would be a red flag for them to determine that any increased amount should be discussed with where it's going to go, either way, just for that one project. They've expanded their collection system immensely, they've spent millions of dollars, which the Rockport users have to pay the debt service for, um, and which was a good model, my understanding, correct me, Audra, if I'm wrong, but they were, because of that debt service and other elements, they were at $18 per 100 cubic feet, um, yeah, 100, 100 cubic feet, uh, when they started realizing they had a, a, a rate problem in the, in the last year or two.
Our budget, their budget, you, you can look at it, it's $1.7 million or so, and it's about 300, 350,000, this was the 2021 budget, which is the one available on the website. It's, it's three to 350,000 dollars that is for Camden fees. Um, that's only a very small portion of their budget. They have, they pay $300,000 to Woodruff and Curran to administer their system, um, without even having a treatment plant. They take $140,000 in administrative fees, which pay for the salary, portions of the salary for the finance director over there, the town manager, the public works director, that, so there are, there are areas where, you know, it's, you know, not our job, that really shouldn't even enter into our calculation about whether we want their wastewater or not, but, you know, politically, I understand they're under a, a, it's a big issue because they have some exorbitant bills for people-
Right.
-but they just went through and they said, well, what would be easiest to eliminate? How about we just pay Camden less? And that's just not an acceptable thing because we don't even have an agreement with-
Mark, I'll let you make a statement, then I want to turn to Audra for recommendations and what you need from us to-
To clarify it one more time, if I remember the numbers that you told us, uh, the quarter, the first quarter that they haven't paid was, the bill was somewhere in the $60,000 range, and they thought that, what was appropriate that they would pay $9,000?
Actually, the bill was in the $75,000 range and they paid $9,000.
They paid $9,000. I wish I could do that. I wish I could, could tell people that I'm gonna-
Thanks, Mark. Audra, could you tell us, we, we need to move on action here, in, in probably more than one front, what, what items do you recommend we move on?
So I, I'd say that, um, you know, when we, I think that there's just a fundamental misalignment of values and needs right now between Camden and Rockport. And so if you don't, if you as a board don't think it's going to be possible for us to reach an agreement that both towns determine to be acceptable, I think there, you know, there's a series of things that can be done to remedy this situation. So I think, you know, kind of the most immediate thing, or these can all happen in parallel, but the, the thing that sort of is right in front of us right now is the question about delinquent user rates. And so, you know, providing with the, the town of Rockport with notice of 30 days to pay all of their delinquent, um, rates and faults Camden, and at the end of the 30-day period, um, and this would all be spelled out in the letter, at the end of the 30-day period, we'd file a claim of unjust enrichment in the Knox County District Court. So that's sort of the, taking care of the, you know, sort of short-term issue. So I think when you're looking at the longer-term issue of, you know, not, us just seeing this as an opportunity to have less wastewater, you know, coming into Camden's treatment plant and for Rockport to really kind of set their own destiny in terms of what they do with their wastewater-
Yep.
-giving Rockport 90 days to present us with a plan for how they're going to remove all of their wastewater flow that goes, that comes directly from, um, Rockport ratepayers, because this wouldn't include Midcoast Solid Waste or the Penn Bay YMCA, because they, they're on a separate, um, separate pipe that goes straight into Camden. Um, so all the, directly from, um, the town of Rockport ratepayers into Camden, and if Rockport doesn't produce and present this plan at the end of 90 days, um, we do have the ability to shut off the flow that comes from, directly from Rockport, um, you know, wastewater customers-
Right.
-into the town of Camden. And so further to that, I think another step that we need to take is providing them with a timeline, um, from the original expiration of the 1990 inter-local agreement, for them to implement the plan that they need to present us with in 90 days and actually start construction on what they need to do to remove their wastewater flow from Rockport to Camden. And again, if they don't begin construction within this period that we agree to and we specify, um, again, we'll shut off the flow from, from the town of Rockport to Camden.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay, those are the three. So I was a little confused between two and three, you said, when you said set their destiny, basically a plan within 90 days, and, or what, and then you kind of repeated that in item three, which was provide-
I would, no, I think, item three is about when they actually begin construction-
Oh.
-because there's a big difference between planning and doing.
Okay, so the planning, plan would be to us by 90 days, if it was not, you're suggesting, 90 days, then we would potentially close the valve. If, now, if, if the, your third item was related to providing a timeline for construction of their, whatever they decide to do, uh, again, it was, uh, to provide that plan within a certain time period, after?
Yeah, and I, I would say, you can all determine what you think is reasonable-
All right, all right.
-in that regard.
Okay.
Oh, and there's another, there's another thing that I, I didn't, um, mention as well, but I think it's very important. So until the steps above are complete, I think that it's really important that we proactively end all additional, um, so, well, I just think it's proactively end all discussions and decisions that enable Rockport to, to expand their system and send more flow to Camden. So I think that this would include any sort of planned expansions that they've talked about, um, as well as any potential reversal of flow from the portion of Rockport's collective, collective system that currently goes, sorry, collection system that currently goes to Rockland, that they might want to reroute to Camden. So that's to Allison's point about, you know, they've connected the systems, they've talked a lot about how they can reverse the flow and send it in either direction, and I would say that, you know, until a lot of these issues are resolved to our satisfaction, we should make it very clear that we're not going to accept additional flow from Rockport.
And that's basically-
And I think that's, like, we might need to reach out to funding agencies like the Economic Development Administration and say, uh, Rockport is going to, you know, they might be, um, applying for an expansion to their system, but, um, if that expansion ends up in increased flow to Camden, we don't have a, a current agreement with them to take it. So we'd recommend that you don't fund this project.
Basically, you're saying, but do you-
That's really important.
Go ahead, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Um, I, I was just saying that, that this last one is really to proactively state that what they have recently built or are planning to build, not coming here.
Yeah, not coming here, but also, it's been difficult because often we haven't found out that these projects are happening unless we read about them in the news-
Yep, yep.
-we are not getting notification that they're happening.
Probably, probably Rockland is not either.
You'll probably rest a plan.
Um, did you, and now, just one, one question, just to be clear for the public benefit too, in a couple places you hear, we have a major valve that, the, the, on the line that comes, where you mentioned closing, shutting that valve off, does DEP have any regulation on that closure of that valve?
They do not, because our permit with DEP is specifically to treat wastewater that is generated by the town of Camden and, and ratepayers in the town of Camden.
So that's not an issue in terms of making that statement?
No, but I, I mean, I'll be very clear, DEP does not want us to shut the flow off from Rockport, but there's really nothing they can do in terms of enforcement action or legal action or anything-
That was my question.
-to stop us doing it if we can't come to terms.
Mark.
A quick question, you mentioned, uh, the, uh, Midcoast, uh, the, the waste system and, uh, YMCA, what about Penn Bay Medical Center? Where does their waste go?
Rockland.
They, and their waste, that's the part of the system that goes to Rockland.
Okay, thank you.
I think they, they just built their own facility, but-
So, um, yeah, yeah, I get, so the, the first one's quite obvious, it's basically a delinquent money, you've got 30 days to pay, otherwise we're basically failing claim for the reasons you stated. That's, that's the first one, right? Right, so does anybody on the board have any issues with that one?
No.
So we should have, you want a motion for that, Audra?
Um, yes, please.
I think you should.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in the second discussion?
This is filing a, a-
Yes, this is basically-
Well, aren't we sending them a letter first?
This is all going to be in a letter, this is all going to be in a letter. So the letter's going to first say, you're delinquent in payment, you have 30 days to, to make payment, or we're going to take the, file in the claim in court for the, the term, I'm not expert on it, Audra mentioned it about, uh, uh, the, taking advantage, um, that's what the motion is.
Yes.
All's in favor? Four zero. The second item, Audra, um, is basically for, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, to require Rockport to provide to us, within 90 days, a plan of what they have in, well, the plan should, in my opinion, should be what they have in motion, and what the, remember, this, this, I can't believe any entity who has an agreement expire and we knew back in Ju- Jan- January of 2020, over two years ago, that they haven't been working on, and some of the things you referenced, where they have been evaluating this, that they, they've had some internal discussions about where they're going. And, and to me, that's a presentation of their plan for basically disconnecting from Camden, correct?
Yeah, so they, I mean, they're, the most recent action was they approved a $64,000 study-
For study.
-to, um, evaluate other appropriate locations for treatment plants, and they were seemed really excited about it based on what I read in the paper, so we need to know what the, I mean, I think we, we just, we haven't said, um, definitively that, you know, our goal would be to, to have, not have Rockport wastewater.
This is the-
So that's, that's where we're going to, you know, make that very clear to them. I can see why they've been a little confused in the past if they, uh-
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've definitely all, or worked on trying to talk to them, but our, the permit does say, or what we have agreed with them does say 161,000 gallons per day, and that's one of the, one of the fundamental problems with our inter-local agreement now-
It was, it was fixed.
-it was dry weather. And so it refers to dry weather capacity, and there was a strong feeling at the time, it says, Rockport is required in the agreement, it said, that, that just expired, Rockport must eliminate its inflow and infiltration as well, but there's, was no mechanism for us to measure that or to require it, and DEP hasn't, you know, they've been cracking down on them, less than on us even, and so what that means is they've said, well, we still aren't, our average, our average is like 70,000 a day, so they've been under that, they've been well under that, and they've thought, well, okay, we can just expand to our hearts' content, but we can't do that because of the, the inflow and infiltration, so.
But I think, but I think the bottom line here is that we haven't seen any cooperative spirit from Rockport to come to an agreement with us. And so I, I don't think, I mean, to me, the details you share, Allison, are interesting, but there's nothing in there that's going to change my mind, that-
No, I'm just for that, because I know that, you know, they're going to say, we planned all this because we're not even at the, but the agreement's over, so they haven't even been-
We're, 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 this letter, the second item should be, the letter should address that, you know, based on, we're familiar with environmental issues and other quality issues that have been addressed here, we, we, we are, we want separation, uh, from the, from the wastewater coming to Camden, period. And so what we want is in nine, within pick the dates, but 90 days, we want their plan to do so, that plan should probably include a timeline-
Yeah.
-in that plan, so we want that within 90 days.
Yes.
And that's the second item. So, um, could we address that one next?
Make a motion that we expect a plan, uh, on Rockport's future regarding wastewater within 90 days.
A plan that includes the-
Including timeline.
Removal of it from our system, you know, the cessation of sending it to us, however that's supposed to work.
And if, and if we don't get that plan within 90 days, we're going to close the valve.
Uh, no.
That's what Audra recommended.
Yes, yes. That's not, that's not technically feasible, if you don't get a, I think we need some guidance from-
Well, it's, if we're gonna, we, we have to do our homework as well. So the issue is that we're asking Rockport for a plan for 90 days, but if we don't have this plan from Rockport for 90 days, we need to do our homework to know, to understand what does shutting the valve entails.
You mean shutting the valve?
We need to give them a reasonable amount of time to-
Then they have to go truck the waste.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, but I'm just, I'm just replaying what Audra mentioned when she, as I heard it, and I wrote it down, you did mention the valve on that item, I thought, Audra, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, she did.
It's true.
What you, sorry.
I was just going to say, what you could put in is that if, um, you know, if they're extenuating circumstances or technical issues, um, that make it impossible for Rockport to hit that 90-day timeframe, um, to, they need to put it in writing and have it approved by the select board for an extension, the Camden Select Board for an extension.
That's fine.
I mean, what we would normally do with somebody that doesn't pay their bill is, I would like to follow a similar-
We're not talking about the bill anymore, we're talking about separation of wastewater from Camden to, to Rockport.
You have to under-
We already-
I don't know what other legal mechanisms are available to us.
We don't really, we can't follow the normal procedure, Allison, because we would lean someone's property if they didn't pay their bill.
We can't lean.
Well, I would give them, they, I would give a longer period of time before, if they, if we, oh, we haven't heard anything from Rockport, I don't want to find out that I authorized town staff to shut a valve back tonight, I want that to come to us again. You know, if, that's, that's more of a discussion, I'm not approving tonight, I don't know enough about the implications of, of, I mean, I think I know enough about the implication-
But you need, if, if the 90 days has no teeth in it.
It's going to need to be more like a, a year altogether.
We're addressing right now, we're addressing what Rockport needs to do, I think what Camden needs to do is a different issue, and we need to address it as well, but right now, we're, we're addressing the plan that we want Rockport to come, come up with and the timeline. So part one was the bill, we, we dealt with it, we voted. Part two is the night, we give them 90 days for a plan, or else we shut the valve. Part three is, we also want to know when they start construction, because that has an implication on the overall timeline, so that's where we are at.
All of it's subject to the board changing its mind.
Right.
I mean, the board can readdress, no, what, the point is, you can't put out a 90-day plan, it's not going to, make it 120 days, make it what you want, but, but-
It's not going to change anything.
-there has to be some teeth in it-
Yeah.
-and, and we, and we have the right to, you know, because today, their actions have not been forthcoming.
Or even their communication.
Yeah, right, so I think-
So I mean, they just, they're just operating on the mindset that, that we must so desperately want to have more wastewater customers, but it's just really, uh-
I am not placing myself in the hand, in the shoes of Rockport, I can't know what Rockport thinks or wants, I can only see that as a customer of our sewage plant, they haven't paid their bills, and that we, as the select board, decide that we actually no longer want to treat their sewage water, because there's no economic or environmental advantage to this. What Rockport thinks is what Rockport thinks, I cannot assume anything.
Exactly, I think-
So, talk to us, Rockport, or-
The motion should be, decide a number of days for the plan, and if not, then we have to close the valve.
90 days, let's give them 90 days.
Obviously, we're going to have to talk about this more, there's going to be technical consulting, and so it's just ridiculous that we would think that we could-
But we need to start somewhere, Allison.
Yeah, we're talking about a letter interrupting.
I just want to have it very much have teeth and very much be prepared to enforce it and not have it be something where we're like, oh, well, we didn't realize that-
I'm prepared to enforce it.
-that somehow negatively impacts Camden when something overflows and runs down the hill toward Camden, but, um-
What I'm saying is, we, right now, we're voting on the plan that Rockport needs to come up with, that means that we also need to- to come up with. That means that we also need to be prepared and to know what it entails to shut the valve in 90 days. But we're not voting on that right now. Right now, we're just voting on the sequence of events that Rockport has to come up with.
Was that the motion you made, Mark, or not?
I'll say that's the motion.
Is that the motion you seconded? Further discussion. All's in favor? Four zero. Now, the last, I'm sorry, the next item was, was that we include the timeline in that plan, Audra. That was your third element, as I heard it.
Construction timeline.
The construction timeline, the timeline to get her done, whatever they decide to get done. And lastly, that we proactively state that we don't want any more discussions about any wastewater of any kind from recent expansions or future planned expansions to be coming, to be discussed with Camden, and that further, we, we may want to contact, I think you said it was EAD?
EDA.
EDA, sorry. EDA, EDA regarding our position in that matter. Is that correct?
If it's, if it's necessary.
If necessary, okay. So that's a long-winded motion, but I'll try to restate it. It's basically, they, in the letter will state that Camden does not want to have any more discussions with Rockport regarding any further flow from recent additions or planned additions to their collection system, and that, and that we may want to communicate with EDA that position.
I don't think that we don't want, it's not that we don't want to have any more discussions, because that implies there have been discussions. But we don't want them to consider, I mean, we want them to be aware that we do not have, that we are alerting them, there is no capacity.
Yeah, a statement, basically, the motion should be a statement that tells Rockport we don't want any more wastewater.
We do not have capacity for...
Not accommodate any wastewater from anything recently, expansions in circulation system or planned, and that further, we may contact EDA with that information if we desire.
I'd say our motion is that we do not want to negotiate any further wastewater coming from new systems or planned in the future systems beyond what was already negotiated in our prior contract.
No, no, no.
I think that they just need to be advised that...
That they built a $6 million system on Route 1. They haven't, they haven't talked to us about it. We don't know where it's going.
That's what I said.
But, but we don't know, we're not, remember, we're talking about them completely disconnecting from us. So we just, we just want to avoid, they may want to come back and talk about some wastewater from that plant. We're, we're breaking off ties. We're telling them, give us a timeline for your separation, most completely. But in parallel, just a reminder that you, that you should not be considering, as the statement said, Rockland or Camden, depending on whatever for the flow. That's what we want to stop those discussions by them.
Right, that we expect that no water from, that, from any parts of the collection system not in place, you know, as part of the original agreement.
That's what I just said.
I was trying to avoid getting into past flows and the interlocal...
We'll negotiate future scenarios, sure, based on some, you know, things really changing, but, but, you know, we're always willing to, to have heard from them, but...
We're asking them for a timeline to separate completely.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree with that, but...
So, I mean, how important, besides the EDA write, to just make it clear in the letter that we won't consider any, we won't have, no, we won't have any discussions regarding any further water, wastewater, wastewater coming from recent, recent adds or the proposed Route 90, and we may want to contact EDA with that information. As simple as that.
I mean, our position is that whether it be, there are other grant-making agencies that might reach out. So our position just needs to be very clear that Camden at this time does not have additional capacity.
Correct, correct.
Period. And that we can't accommodate, we're not supportive of, cannot accommodate.
Environmentally, we don't want to do it. We don't want any more. Audra, what words would you want to put into that, this item, if at all? Because I think we're beating it to death.
Yeah, I would say, you know, just approving me to reach out to any external funding bodies that might consider granting funds to Rockport to expand their collection system to send additional flow to Camden.
I mean, the DEP is really in a better position to do that, and I think that they're going to...
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I want us proactively reaching out to all grant-making agencies. Proactively do that. They will say Camden and Rockland are not, you know...
Allison, it hasn't been a problem with the DEP or the EPA. It's been a problem with the EDA. They're the ones who gave a huge grant for Rockport to expand their system and connect on Route 1.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
All right. So that's the motion and a second discussion.
No more.
All in favor? Four zero. Okay, that's it, Audra. That closes it out.
And, and I do want to make one point, because I think this is really important, because this is sure to come up in the media when people reach out to Rockport about it. They genuinely believe that they tried in good faith to negotiate with Camden, and they wanted to pick through our budget and our operations and like every single expense that they didn't think applied directly to Rockport, they wanted to cut out of, you know, out of what they determined needed to be calculated as part of their rate. And they wanted to fashion an interlocal agreement around that premise. So I think it's really important to say, yes, they believe that they were negotiating with us, and they genuinely did try to negotiate based on the outcome that they wanted, but it ignored 30 years of the, you know, an agreement that we had currently with them that was developed on all kinds of premises that had them paying the same full rate as Camden ratepayers. So I think that's just very important to say, because I know what's going to be said in counter to, you know...
I agree. The statement that Allison showed from their town manager was said basically that we tried to negotiate and, yeah, I'm sorry.
They only wanted to pay less. They went in and they were only looking to pay less, and the fact is, they, we all maybe have to pay more in the future.
You can, you can talk about having trouble in negotiation. It doesn't give you numerous many statements to go and pay what you think you want to pay. I'm sorry, just went that way.
I think, you know, and I think it's, personally, I think it's sad, because
It is sad.
At the time where everybody's talking about pulling resources together, regionalization, coming together to solve big environmental problems, to have this type of, of event happen to us in, in a place where our natural resources is, that's what we bring to the bank, right?
Yep.
We, we're surviving Camden because of the harbor, of the snowball, of the incredible nature we have. So I'm really, I'm personally saddened that we're not able to come to an agreement with Rockport, but it is what it is. And sometimes it's better to go separate ways.
We can send our sewage to them someday when they build something better and get it out of the harbor.
Newer.
I'd love to do that.
I think it is sad, because there was a time period when I honestly believed that we could do more, and we're trying to do more with the then Select Board of Rockport, but it's steadily gone the other way. And that's, it's all about communication. They think they're communicating. It's a one-way communication.
Well, this isn't, this is a little bit of different, because it's, you know, it's a finite resource and it's a harbor and it's a, you know, there's only so much wastewater that, you know, it's, communication can only go so far in terms of how much wastewater we want to add to the harbor. So it's not, I don't see it as reflective of every single thing, but...
No, it's not.
This is just, we only have so much to negotiate with.
It's not. It's not about every single thing. It's about, like I said, the, the communication. You know, when I'm having a negotiation with somebody, I don't go to the media and tell them what I'm going to do. Rockport did that, and they told them that they hoped Camden would agree. You, that, I'm sorry, all of their actions have been, well, not as, as all of us would like for a regionalization position.
One thing I want to make...
Right. I just, I think at the end of the day, we don't have the same values anymore.
Yep.
They want to get their rates as low as possible, and we have environmental concerns that we need to address and need to protect our sources. So...
One thing I, yeah, one thing I want to make clear, when we say that wastewater's going into Camden Harbor, we do mean treated wastewater, wastewater that's come from the plant. I want to make sure that people don't misunderstand and think that we're...
No, thank you. That's always a good way to be clear.
It's not treated when our, when things overflow, but that's mostly our untreated stuff.
That's true, that's true. But it's intended to be treated. With that...
Before we adjourn...
Yes, ma'am.
I just noticed that we, the minutes are not correct from the last meeting, because we had an executive session, and we didn't adjourn from the executive session and adjourn from the select board. It's not in the minutes.
She probably didn't have the information.
Yeah. So I'm just asking that we send her the information, because she's going to complete the minutes anyway. There's some issues there.
That's my job. I need to do that. I'll do it.
Thanks.
Good catch. With that, adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn the Select Board this evening, March 21st, 2022.
I second.
You too. All's in favor? Audra, bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Audra.